Evening, everyone. This is the January fifteenth meeting of the Town of Warren Zoning Board of Review. I am the Chair, Andrew Ellis. To my right is the Vice Chair, Jason Raynon, followed by Bert Rodriguez, Michael Elves, and David Francis. Mr. Elves and Mr. Francis are normally alternate members. However, they will be voting members tonight since we have two of the regular members absent. Should any matter be continued to a future meeting? The same five people who are here tonight would need to be present in order to hear any matters going forward. So we do have a quorum that allows us to continue with the meeting. And the first matter is approval of minutes from the previous meeting on December the eighteenth. Is there any discussion or is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so the meeting minutes of December eighteenth are approved. We have no old business pending, so we can go right to the new business. I'm going to suggest to the board that we have a motion for the sake of expediency to move number five, Application twenty-five oh five, to the first matter of business because I think it may be able to be resolved quickly. Would you like to make a motion for that?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so number, Application twenty-five oh five, we're going to begin with that one as the first matter. Would the applicant like to come forward, please? That is Andy Aruda, owner, and Jesus Rivera, applicant, eighty-four Cutler Street, Flat Map Eight Lot One fifteen, request a special use permit to allow an auto mechanic use in the business zoning district. So anyone who's going to speak, if you can just identify yourselves by name and address so the stenographer can report that.
Ryan Aruda, twenty-eight Brownell Street, Moore, Rhode Island.
Okay.
Jason Rivera, twelve Wall Street, Providence, Rhode Island.
Okay.
Andy Aruda, twenty-eight Brownell Street, Rowan.
Okay, very good. So just give us a brief overview of what it is you'd like to do here on this property and why you think a special use is appropriate and meets the standards regarding one.
That be the owner or the occupant?
At whoever would like to speak.
I'll speak just quickly on that. As far as why it should be approved, we have had, right next door to us Johnny Rogers, who worked on cars when I bought the building probably twenty-five, thirty years ago.
Just, just tell us what it is you're proposing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Auto mechanics in unit eleven twelve, but as far as you said, why, you know, why should it be approved? It's, it's been pretty common along there. And they're two tradesman bays that are away from residential. There's no residential anywhere around, so it's really confined to their two fifteen hundred square foot bays.
So you're taking two of the units in the property and you're going to use that for an auto mechanic shop?
Very close, one and a half. What is this, is number eleven I use as my office?
Okay.
I don't want to bore you with it, but last winter we bought him a used lift and he works for a dealership and he was working on his own car on the side and then it morphed into this, so they're going to be using eleven and twelve, but I have my office in there. Now let them take it from there.
That's right, so a portion of those units are going to be used for an auto mechanic shop. And you've indicated there's parking available here?
Yeah, there's parking. We have four available spaces on the side of the building so the traffic can move in and out. And he made it pretty clear that he doesn't want any more than that.
I was just going to make sure, is this compliant with the number of parking spaces required for this unit? Check, Vice Chairman can just look at that. Are these spaces dedicated to these two units or are they shared with the other units on the block?
No, they're, they're dedicated to our, our two units.
So that's the four spaces in front of the unit?
On the side of the unit, yes.
Sorry, on the, what is in front of the unit?
There's, there's parking space in the front, that'd be for our personal parking.
So, okay, so there's parking for your, the employees of the auto body shop?
Yes, in the front and then on the side.
And then on the side is additional.
Yes.
You haven't asked, you said there's four spaces to the side?
Yes.
So four spaces in the side and one, two, five spaces in the front?
Two.
Typical, okay, so site plan submitted, there's an arrow showing parking in the front and it's drawn across five spaces, is that accurate or not?
There's five spaces in the front?
Yes. Who was, absolutely correct. There's an arrow there, there's five spaces.
That was my reading. There is parking in the front, obviously I need one for my own unit, but this is the parking on the side that they were speaking of. Up the side.
There's parking.
Yes, yes, that side, that whole side is open.
So then essentially we would have four spots available in the front, four on the side?
Two in the front, four on the side.
Two in front, four on the side.
Front being south, side being west.
Yes, because I need one, that's my office also, so I.
So there's space for employee parking, you and whoever else is working here, and then there's four more spaces on the side. Okay. How many vehicles would you anticipate being at this shop at any one time being worked on?
So given the four parking spaces, we don't plan on having any more than four at a time. We want to get cars in and out as fast as possible, so, yeah, just the four spaces.
So is there repair work happening all in those four spaces or do the vehicles enter the building?
The vehicles enter the building.
So the vehicles go into the building, but that, those four spaces would be where you're housing the vehicles, whether waiting to be serviced?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, or, or if we happen to get a vehicle and the car gets, I don't know, for some reason it's like backwatered, those are the spaces that's available, but realistically, we're not, we're hoping to just get them in and out that day. It's just we have those four spaces just in case it doesn't happen.
And so how many bays in the, how many vehicles go into the building at one time?
One, one at a time.
All right, so it's just, it's basically a one bay service job. One vehicle goes in, gets work done, and it comes out in the next minute.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could put another car behind us, like if it's like for an oil change or if we're doing like a diagnostics or somebody's like, hey, I hear a ticking or hey, like common errors, it's like, I need my tire filled up because they don't realize that when it gets colder outside your tires deflate, so they think they got a hole in it or something, but other than that, it'll be one car at a time.
And for this business, you're going to comply with all safety and hazard regulations, including like containment of vehicle fluids, you know, have spill kit on hand, maintain any DEM requirements that nothing's going to leak out of the property?
Yep, so we have special disposal metal containers for, you know, used rags, you know, anything covered in fluid. We have metal containers to store different fluids and all that, like safe, you know, metal cabinets.
And you're going to abide by all fire regulations for safe handling of vehicles in a building?
Yes.
And are there other employees other than the two of you working there?
No.
It's just the two, just the two of you? And your office is in part of unit eleven? So there's a maximum of three employees between those two units at any one time, if you happen to be there? And you're having four vehicles to be serviced? Mr. Aruda, can you estimate the square footage for those units?
Yes, fifteen hundred square foot each.
Fifteen hundred each?
Yep, it's approximately twenty-one feet wide by seventy feet deep.
So we're talking about three thousand square feet?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it would fall under business and commercial use. Can we just check on the parking? Spaces, hotel, lodging, multifamily. Yeah, so it's going to be a business and commercial use. So the calculation is five spaces plus one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet of floor space. So the parking requirement for this space is going to be seventeen parking spots. That seems like a lot.
Seventeen, that doesn't sound great.
Well, yeah, let's, let's talk about the calculation with the building official. So are you classifying this as a business commercial use for the purposes of parking?
Sorry, I, I, I think that number's rather high for what is going on.
Yes.
We evaluate this, if you give me a couple of seconds, but that, and when I did, when I originally did the calculations, I didn't see that number.
The alternative would be to classify it as a business or commercial on open land, which I'm not necessarily sure that that would be appropriate, but the space count makes a little more sense. That would be one space for every two employees and one additional space for every four thousand square feet.
I have seven units in that building. It's the newer building, the tradesman, and I have two spaces for each tenant in front. And it's been there for fourteen years now.
Maybe, maybe we have, is there a decision on record maybe that specifies the parking for this building? Like perhaps it was granted relief from?
It would have been two thousand nine, I believe, two thousand ten.
The Chair, as this board has done in the past, because parking is kind of in the gray area right now, certainly can include the parking available inside the building if these cars are going to go in as part of the calculation or in lieu of that, just put as a condition that he has to provide a parking plan for the whole area to the building official and get his approval, you know, just to safeguard what I put in town.
I have provided parking plans in the past, we can certainly redo it. They can fit three cars in each bay as far as the length. For diagnostic and such, not, you know, putting it on lifts, we don't have more than one lift in each unit.
That's, well, again, there may be. There may already be a variance in place on this property allowing for the one, two, three, four, what? Five, there's five units in this building?
Seven.
Seven. All right, so it's just, so this building has seven commercial units?
Yes.
And the only parking that's available is the parking that's shown around the south side. It looks like there's a couple of spaces on the east side and then you just identify some going on the west side.
On the east side, you'll notice at the end, does it say unit seventeen?
It doesn't say anything on the plan, but there's three spaces shown. There's three spaces shown right there.
Yes, there, there is a lot, this is a whole rocky area, bluestone, probably.
That can accommodate.
Eight thousand square feet.
You know, this, this rings a bell as being familiar. I remember the discussion from some years back about this gravelly lot.
It's all related to a Brownsfield way back when, when I had to cap it with clean fill and put bluestone over it. And every year I submit to the DEM pictures and a narrative as to the cap has been maintained. So there's parking on that cap and there's a lot of room over there.
All right, then perhaps we could find that, given the delineated parking spaces shown on the plan plus the, shall we say, overflow parking in the gravel area, we find that it is sufficient parking to meet the requirements?
Thank you. Believe me, I am the last one that wants extra cars there and I mean that very clearly.
We just want to make sure we're, you know, following the regulations and not.
He would never, he would never allow that many cars. We'll get kicked out.
Sun or not, it will be.
So I think we can consider that a finding, a fact, that based on the plan submitted, described the parking is sufficient. Right, you described it's not going to be, I talked about hazards, how are we going to contain them if we're applying the regulation? Is there any construction that needs to happen on the, in the two units here to? No, it's basically as is.
Every day, yeah.
Do other members of the board have any specific questions at this time about what's proposed? Anything?
No.
Okay, I'll ask if anyone present in the public this evening would like to express an opinion? Yes, please do come forward.
Andre Assam, ninety-nine South Coller Street. Andy Aruda's been a neighbor for quite a few years now, how long have you been with that?
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years.
I was thirteen at the time.
And as you can see, I'm the only neighbor that showed up for the meeting. So if there were a problem with him, there would be a dozen people here. We've never had a problem and anything that has come up, he has more than graciously taken care of the situation. So I have no concerns about what is going to go in there because he has a good reputation with the neighborhood and I do not expect that to change. So I have no objection to this.
I think we can put full faith in your observations. Do your long tenure before this board. So take that as a solid endorsement that there are no problems. Is there anyone else here that wants to make any sort of comments regarding this application? I'm not seeing anyone. So back to the applicants here, is there any further information you want to describe about this business that you think would be useful for us in making a decision?
I don't know if you have any questions, sir.
Are there any other specific questions?
Operation hours, days a week?
So it's Monday through Friday, we'll be there from eight AM to five PM approximately. And then after five PM, the doors close for any clients. We'll still be there working till about, no later than seven. That's on the vehicles if we have to, but. Um, that's on the vehicles if we have to, but the doors will be closed to the public.
It's more a question of what do you think the earliest point in time you would arrive and begin working, and what's the latest that you would leave?
So we'll be there at eight AM, and the latest we will leave will be seven PM.
Okay, and do you anticipate you doing work over the weekends?
On a weekend, Saturdays, uh, I, I would say Saturdays, yes, Sundays definitely not.
Okay, so if we were to say eight AM to seven PM, Monday to Saturday, that would cover any time you might be.
Yes.
In the shop, making noise, working on anything.
Yes. And the, uh, garage doors stay closed, so it's, it's pretty soundproof, like when you're in there, uh, most of our equipment's electrical. We do have, we do have the, um, compressors, but even with the doors closed, you don't even hear it.
Is there any, uh, new exterior lighting or signage happening?
I know you didn't ask about security, but I do have cameras all around, uh, the building, um, and lighting has been sufficient for years, we just, um. We have plenty of lighting, no- nothing additional, signage, they are gonna have a sign on a nameplate onto the left as you come in, so I have all my tenants listed there.
On the existing tenant displays.
Exactly. They are gonna have probably a small magnet on the door.
Yeah, that's it.
A logo.
Just a logo, no lights, um, there is actually, there is gonna be a, a open light on the window, that's just open, but that gets unplugged after.
That's just identifying businesses. Um, that's fine, um, are there any other, uh, questions from the board? Uh, someone prepared with a motion on this matter?
I am prepared to do a motion.
Very good, please, uh.
I propose a motion to approve application number twenty-five zero five, and Jesus Rivera applicant of eighty-four Cutler Street. But map eight lot one fifteen, request for a special use permit to allow auto mechanic use in the business zoning district. This application, uh, in special use is compatible with the neighboring land uses. Um, the owner, Mister Aruda, alluded that there has been a prior business, um, adjoining that property that was. In a mechanic service area, uh, as well, it is a mixed use building, I believe. Other types of businesses there as well. So it is appropriate in that land use, the special use will not create any hazard in the neighborhood. It has sufficient enough security relative to the contaminants and hazardous materials, and that it uses metal. Containers and other, um, types of industry, um, containment, uh. Procedures, uh, in order to capture liquids and, and dispose of them accordingly. The special use permit is compatible with the comprehensive plan. In that it will, um, bring more business, um, into and create into the town, um, as well as create a bigger tax base. Um, you know, produce some more mechanics in our neighborhood, um. The public convenience and welfare will be served in that, again, it will create, um, more variety of use. Uh, relative to, um, shops in the area. I can go over some parking.
Sure, yeah, I gotta find the conditions.
Um, so it was the testimony today of the owner that there is. Ample parking provided, um, on the lot itself, um, and there is a parking plan on record.
Yes, there is, when the daycare went in years ago.
For this particular property, they have four spaces on the side, which is the west of the two lots of the two. Building areas, two units, uh, that will be for customers and two spaces in the front that will be used for, um, the owners of. The company. They will add a logo on the door, as well as an existing sign will be updated to represent the business. Hours of operation will be from Monday through Saturday, eight to seven PM. There'll be no additional lighting, uh, the owner had professed that they are, there is ample lighting there. And we will abide by all safety concerns and codes, uh, fire safety as well.
Are there any, uh, further conditions or amendments? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? So the ma- uh, matter is passed, uh, five to zero, uh, so you can move forward with your business.
Truly thank you so much, all yous.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, guys, all for your time, good luck.
And thanks for putting us ahead on the agenda.
Alright.
Thank you.
Uh, next we'll be returning back to the top of the order for new business. Uh, we have application twenty-five, uh, zero one. Uh, this application is for Juan Myño, owner and Miles Hammerick applicant. Five oh one Main Street, plant four, lot one oh fives. Request for a special use, uh, to allow a mixed use, being residential over commercial in the village business district. Uh, good evening, if you want to just identify yourself, please.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Miles L Hammerick Junior.
And your address is?
Twenty-six Limestone Street, uh, Warwick, Rhode Island, oh two eight eight nine.
Okay, very good, uh, so if you wanna go ahead and describe, uh, what you're going to do with the project here. And, uh, why especially use is appropriate to do this?
So we're gonna be turning the upstairs of five oh one Main Street into residential, um, apartments, it's gonna be, um. Two, well, actually, one three bedroom and one two bedroom. It's been, um, a commercial space that's just been sitting for a while, and the owner wants to take it, um, advantage of the opportunity. Because she realizes, um, how much real estate is needed in the area, so, um, she wanted to see if we can move forward with, um. Put into apartments in there, if that's feasible.
Do you know what the, uh, usage now is of that?
Excuse me? Oh, no, it's, it hasn't been used in years, it's just, I mean, it looked, it did, I'm sorry, it did look like office space, yes, it was office space at one point.
Can I clarify for me, just so I orient myself correctly, what are the two businesses that are downstairs?
There is a coffee shop and a pizza parlor.
Gotcha, I know where.
It's directly across the street.
And, yeah, really, I could sneeze and you would hear it.
It, it looks a lot different in real life, the line.
Right, really?
Want to ask about, so the line drawing.
Okay.
Um, it looks like as part of the special use to make these apartments.
Yes.
Uh, you're modifying the second floor facade by changing the windows and. Uh, infilling some of the existing space, the windows were putting different windows.
Correct.
Um, if we were to approve the special use, the potential condition would be. You would have to get approval from the Warren Historic Commission.
Yes.
Uh, to, so whatever decision we would make, uh, it would be contingent upon them.
Okay.
granting approval of, uh, whatever proposed changes.
Okay. So I knew, I did speak to this gentleman Matthew in, um, in regards to the egress windows, so. The client is aware of that and, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so we may condition it that whatever you do for these egress windows.
Okay.
Uh, needs to be approved by the historic commission.
Okay.
Uh, while, while we're just on the subject of the windows, uh, there's another thing is, uh, that the special use doesn't create any kind of nuisance or hazard. Um, it looks like, as I'm looking at the plan, the unit on the right, is it true? That there is no window or natural light coming into the living space?
Yes, there is not a window in the living space.
That may be something you have to discuss with the building official.
Yeah.
Um, with access to natural light.
Okay.
For that space.
Okay.
There may be minimum standards that, again, not to create something that is a nuisance or hazard to put people in a space.
Understood.
That has no access to natural light, I mean, I appreciate that the bedrooms need the egress windows.
Yeah.
You've put them there, but you may have to have some.
Okay.
Uh, so I mean, it may be conditioned upon, uh, a plan acceptable to the building official to meet. Uh, minimum natural light.
Okay.
Um, certainly will also would condition, uh, any approval, uh, that the plan has to be reviewed and. Uh, approved by the fire chief.
Mm-hmm.
Right, in terms of fire separation of the units, any fire resistant construction that's needed, because you are changing from commercial.
Yes.
Residential, so you'd have to abide by whatever regulations, uh.
I have been speaking with the fire marshal, he did tell me that I was gonna more than likely have to change the layout. Because there's a sprinkler system that is existing, um, because it was commercial space, um, so he did say I did have to. Change the layout of the sprinklers, um, due to the fact that we're throwing up interior partitions.
Yeah, so again, with not creating a nuisance or hazard, we just wanna make sure whatever the fire department determines is appropriate.
Okay.
Uh, that you're going to comply with those.
Okay.
Regulations.
Yep.
Is there any, I'm assuming there's no parking assigned to these units?
No, there isn't as of yet, but, um.
You are, you are in the village business district, um, which is acceptable.
Yes.
Know if it's not acceptable?
He, he does have to have parking for these two units.
He has to have.
He has to have one parking per unit.
So you don't have any parking?
Well, there, there is, um, parking in the back of the building, um. So me and the client discussed putting two assigned parking spots for the residential apartments, and we would mark those.
So is there an existing approved? Well, I guess it wouldn't matter because the businesses don't require any parking, so.
No.
The remain, whatever is going on in the back there, however many spaces you have, it doesn't make any difference, as long as you mark two.
Yes.
For the residents, so you're going to be meeting that with what?
Yes.
Alright, very good, um. You'd also have to comply with, you know, any egress things about stairs or second means of egress that the fire department.
Yes.
Has to make sure this, there's no hazards being created here.
Mm-hmm.
We have any other que- I mean, I think you testified it, and I think we're aware that, um, the downtown area is of a mixed use.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, we're, we're very aware of it. And, um, speaking with the fire marshal, he did say there was some commercial spaces that did convert to apartments over these businesses in the area, so. It is a common thing.
You have other questions?
Are they gonna be using the elevator?
Well, that, the elevator is out of commission, that's something she did wanna attach after, um, she invested into, um, the apartments.
Is this a two floor?
Yeah, well, yeah, the first floor is the, is the pizza parlor and the, um, the coffee, the coffee bar, the second floor is just gonna be all apartments, just the two.
So are they gonna be in the plan to utilize in the elevator?
No, the elevator, as of now, is decommissioned, I think that is written on the.
Other questions about the proposed special use of residential over commercial? Okay, uh, is, is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to offer any comments regarding this matter? Uh, not seeing anyone here. Um, so we can bring it back to the discussion with applicant, um, you've indicated that. You feel the plan, uh, is compatible with the surrounding area because of the mixed uses you've investigated. What's going on in the downtown, you feel this is a good fit.
Oh, yes.
Uh, you've addressed, uh, that you're taking all, uh, fire and safety concerns, uh, in hand, uh, so there's no nuisance or hazard created. Um, you've talked about, uh, allocating two spaces in the back, uh, so there is parking for the two proposed, uh, tenants.
Yes.
Um, is there any, um, additional signage or lighting on the exterior of the building being?
Um, I don't think so, honestly, I really don't.
It's fine, you don't have anything.
Maybe, you know, maybe a motion in the back of the building.
That's not lighting or.
Okay, okay.
That's just for, that's like safety and security, or like, uh, lighting on a sign or decorative.
None, none of that.
Uh, and we've discussed, um, you know, the need, uh, the potential need to condition this, uh, that the facade would be. Reviewed by the historic district commission, and the, um, access to natural light in the unit.
And the, yes, on the right, okay.
The egress for this is, uh, the front of the building, do you have egress in the back as well?
Yes, we have a fire escape in the back, and we have the stairs right on the main entrance.
Yeah, I think the fire escape isn't illustrated, but there does appear to be a door.
Yes, at least a fire escape.
Uh, and again, that would. That would all be subject to review and approval by the fire.
Understood.
Any other questions or concerns? Anything else you'd like to add?
How do I get in touch with, um, historic for the windows?
Well, uh, though, if we were to approve this through the town offices, um.
Okay.
Uh, they can direct you what the process is.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, is anyone prepared with a motion?
I'll take it.
Okay, please, uh, go ahead.
Application number twenty-five dash zero one, Daniel Mayo nail, no. Owner and Miles Hammerick applicant, five oh one Main Street, plat- four. Uh, plat map four, lot one oh five, request for a special use permit to allow mixed use residential. Over commercial in the village business district. I recommend that we approve the setup application. The, the applicant, um, um. The, the spec- for a special use permit, the special use permit is, uh, compatible with the neighborhood, there are, um, other. They're looking to do two units and, um, eliminate the office area. Um, there are other buildings on Main Street, um, in the village business district that have the same format with the. With the businesses below and the apartments above, uh, the special use, um, will not create a hazard in the neighborhood. Um, the windows that will be, um, will be replaced will have to, will have to, um. The egress windows will have to more than likely go in front of the historical association. They, uh, planned, uh, some minimal lighting in the back. Fire, uh, fire and state regulations will have to be met, uh, the village business, business district also, um. They'll have to allow, um, um, permitted, you know, uh, spaces in the back for, for. Two parking spaces, one per unit. Um, I'm just gonna mention that the elevator is decommissioned and that has to come back up again, that they would have to go through the proper, um. Certifications to get that, to get that back up. Uh, the special use permit will, uh, be compatible with the community, again, the comprehensive plan is to, for us to, um, to create more housing. And more apartments, um, and we've been doing that along Main Street and in the village business district, uh, right along. Um, it, and I, again, it, it, uh, the public, uh, convenience and welfare will be served, uh, by adding two more units and. Eliminating a, a vacant, uh, office space that's been there for, I, I know for quite a while it's been vacant. So, um, I recommend that we approve it.
I second the motion.
Hold on, I'm just gonna have a specific, specific condition to address that. Um, the impact of the special use on the facade is contingent upon approval by.
Yes.
Historic.
Yes.
Uh, Warren Historic Commission, uh, so that must be met in order to that, and, uh, you must have. An approved plan by the building official regarding access to natural light.
Okay.
Uh, in the living portion of the unit.
Okay, so would you like me to get a new design from the architect showing?
You just review it with him and decide.
Okay.
What is appropriate to accommodate.
Okay.
Are there, uh, oh, we should also say there was no planned, uh, additional signage or exterior lighting.
Oh, no, no.
Uh, any other conditions or amendments?
Uh, just that all plans must be approved by the fire marshal.
Okay.
Anything else? Alright, now, is there a second?
Second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so the motion is passed, uh, five to zero, so you can, uh, meet with the representatives of town hall, go to the next steps.
Alright, thank you so much, guys.
Uh, Mister Solicitor, i- is it appropriate for a motion to combine the testimony on the next three matters, since it is the same, uh, applicant?
Yes, Mister Chair, stripy plot testimony.
Yes, alright, so is there a motion to combine the testimony? Uh, so that it is equally applicable to, uh, applications twenty-five oh two, twenty-five oh three, and twenty-five oh four. Uh, so that it is equally applicable to uh, applications twenty-five oh two, twenty-five oh three, and twenty-five oh four.
Motion to add the.
With, with the uh, requirement that each application will have its own separate motion. Sounds like you've made that motion.
Yep, yes.
Seconded, seconded, alright, on favor, aye? Alright, so for purposes of testimony, uh, these three applications will be combined. Uh, so we have application twenty-five oh two, oh three, and oh four. Twenty-five oh two is for Centurion Property Group LLC owner and Nicholas A. Ferrara applicant. Twenty-one Homestead, Homestead Ave, plat thirteen D. Lot ninety-seven, request for a special use permit to unmerge current lot into two lots of record in the R ten zoning district. Then we have uh, twenty-five oh three and twenty-five oh four. Which are each to construct a two-family dwelling unit on what I would presume would be one of the. Separated lots other referenced in application twenty-five oh two. So, good evening, you could please identify yourself for the stenographer.
Good evening Chair, good evening Board, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Nicholas Ferrara. Owner of Centurion Property Group, sixty-nine Watsheer Ave, East Providence, Rhode Island. That being said, I will always call Warren and specifically Laurel Park, my home.
Okay.
Uh, I've owned a ranch there, more than half my life.
Alright, so describe, yeah, just describe uh, what the uh, plan is with regard to the existing lot and what you'd like to do.
Sure, so the most simple straightforward way to, to explain it is I'm looking for the special use for an administrative unmerging. Of the four current parcels that exist on the corner of Homestead and Third Street, twenty-one Homestead. To make them two separate lots, of which I will proceed to demolish and. Take away the existing dilapidated structure that has been in disrepair and quite a nice lot for the neighborhood for quite some time. Of which I will increase the economic viability of the parcels by moving forward and building. A two-family on each one of the two lots, which will increase housing for the community. And increase the tax roll for the town, all while dressing up the neighborhood, adding value to the surrounding area by having two modern. Nice houses. I feel the sp, the special use is compatible to the neighborhood. Where the lots in question are right next door to my father's four family. There's a six-unit apartment building on the corner of Homestead and Third Street. You have a three-family house right next to Homestead Park down the street and roughly eighty units at the top of Third Street. So it is compatible to the neighborhood, either angle you look at it from.
So, so let's talk about that point here, um.
Chair, could I add one additional item to that? We do have plenty of room for ample parking for all units.
Okay.
So there'll be plenty of off-street parking, there'll be no congestion on the street or anything like that, so just add that in.
Okay, so your contention that there are other multi-family units uh, in the vicinity, which is why you're basing. You feel it's compatible, that there are similar other properties. Um, I did not see any kind of plan or map submitted. Um, identifying the locations of those ones you're citing as a reference in proximity to these two lots. Is that something you would be able to?
I didn't realize that needed to be presented to the board, but I mean, it's a simple thing.
It could bolster your case.
Okay.
You know, from, you know, prior experience, uh, it's useful, uh. When someone makes a claim that something's compatible with the neighboring uh, land use. Uh, if you're citing other specific properties that are two-family or four-family or whatever.
I didn't realize that needed to be in writing, I'm verbally addressing that now.
Yeah, I think that may, it may be something the board might want to see, again, to have finding of the fact of why this is appropriate. Uh, it may be something that we would uh, request from you. Uh, another thing that we might want to request is. So you've submitted this diagram, uh, but that's not really a site plan. Per se of the property. Uh, it doesn't show the, I mean, this, it doesn't show, you know, the. House on the two lot, the houses on the two lots that are being proposed. It doesn't show uh, the proximity to the neighboring houses and lots. It doesn't show uh, streets on this, it's just kind of a generic diagram.
Sure.
Uh, of a box, uh, with some numbers on it, but it doesn't really show. How these lots are going to be delineated in the context of the neighborhood. So is that something that you would uh, be willing to provide to the board?
If it's something you're asking me for, I will provide it, sir, yes.
Okay, I was gonna, it may bolster uh, the case of us determining whether or not this is appropriate, so we can see the relationship of what you're proposing. Uh, to its surroundings.
Sure.
Uh, with regard to the unmerge, do you know when these four lots were merged?
I don't really know for certain, I believe it was in the seventies, but again, I don't know. Oh, okay, nineteen eighty-three.
So, uh. So hold on, you'll have to identify yourself again for the stenographer, and if you could come up, is it possible to come up? It's easier for the stenographer. If it's possible.
Nineteen eighty-three.
Nineteen eighty-four.
Nineteen eighty-three. I was very heavy with politics in town back then. They had a tax merge, they had the land merge for tax purposes. Instead of paying taxes on each lot. They said if you merge the lots together, you'll have one tax bill and save money on your taxes. Well, eventually that was a lie back then, because it's almost impossible to unmerge what you own today, but they took from you back then. I know this is a new people. You know, this is forty years ago, and that's how this happened.
Alright, so do you know when the four individual lots were originally platted out?
Um, I have the entire plat plan at my house, I don't have it with me. Do I know when? I don't know this.
Not at the present, you don't know what it is.
I give you a coffee, but if you don't have it, you don't have it.
So it, it's a little bit um, perhaps different than some of the other unmergers we've had in the past where you're not. Returning it directly to its originally platted condition of having four lots, you're looking to.
Just get.
Unmerge it and consolidate two of each of the smaller lots.
Put two together to make one big lot, yeah, two and two.
I think by doing that, it'll alleviate the congestion of the area.
Well, I mean, that you can, we'll have an opportunity to present why you think that that's a good, you know, a good solution to this property.
If I could, could I look at that plot plan I was sitting in at your daughter's?
That?
Yes, that's that. It shows the eighty by eighty, house is twenty-five feet wide. The twenty-five feet wide by fifty-two feet long, and that's on one of the eighty by eighty lots, and here's Homestead Ave. And you can have the driveway right here, you've got more than enough side yards for a corner lot, I mean, twenty-five feet, thirty feet. So what else would you need for this?
Well, I think we're only seeing a representation of one of these houses.
Yeah, with your split, it would be identical on the other side.
She can't.
Yeah, you have to state your name, sir. Yeah, just, if you could just start over, state your name for the, uh, the clerk.
I'm Nicholas Ferrara. She knows.
What we're saying is we can't, yes, we see this as a.
Showing one house on one eighty by eighty lot that would have been two forty by eighties at one time.
Correct, this is a concept for one. We're talking about creating two here, so we'd like to see a plan in the. We'd like to see a plan showing both lots with their proposed houses. And its proximity to the neighboring uh, buildings and properties that are around it. See both streets, I mean, this is just a diagram, right, it doesn't give us the whole picture.
So I had to draw.
Well, it's a, it's a start, it's a start, um, but generally, um, when we're talking about. Redeveloping a piece of property, we would see a site plan that has been surveyed. And laid out to show what is the context of the neighborhood and how this is going to fit in.
It's up to you to decide.
Again, it's evidence that we need to have on hand, uh, in order to make a decision, so it might be something that we may ask. Uh, be submitted so we can see a more complete picture of what's being proposed.
Mr. Chair, I would, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but the plan set that was submitted is not actually tagged with a project address. Is it safe to assume that these plans represent the size, shape, and function of the houses that we would be planning on building on?
That is identical to what would be.
Boy, they got the blueprint.
So again, it might be useful that on um, a complete site plan, um, you would show like the. Floor plan of the first floor of the house, so we can see, it looks like there's a deck, there's some stairs, there's a porch. How does all that relate? This is just a freestanding thing, this does not show the full boundaries of the lot and its adjacency to the neighboring lots. Right, this is like, if, this could be anywhere, right? This plan, this house could be anywhere, it could be in Warren, it could be in Timbuktu.
You want an address on the plan, is what I'm getting from this.
Yes, but also what's shown on this piece of paper has no context around it, it's just a floating floor plan. We don't see how it fits into these two specific lots with the surrounding context of the neighborhood, is it? Right, this is a generic layout of a house.
I'm just confused. What, you want, what, you wanna know what every house is around those two lots you're asking?
Some, some minimal context here, this right, this doesn't show me any relationship to anything else that's there. I just see. A rectangle on a piece of paper.
On the lot, on the same lines that's for that one lot, that's the.
I wanna see both, got two lots, I wanna see two floor plans.
Two houses.
Two houses, and I wanna see how that relates to the lots that are bought.
Can pictures be taken?
You can have photographs, but generally a site plan. I mean, ju, generally, a site plan for a land development is something that is typically submitted, that's surveyed by a professional surveyor.
I have one.
Alright, so if we have that.
Comprehensive plan from the town.
If you have a surveyed site plan showing where you're planning on building these houses.
Yeah.
Where the driveways are going, so we can see where the curb cuts are going to be, you know, any accessory structures, the porch. Uh, stairs, uh, anything you're planning on putting here, so we know how it relates to the neighborhood as a whole.
No problem, just project, I'm just trying to walk you through it.
Fine, um.
It may be that your architects or designers were planning on providing it anyway. Um, it is listed in the list of drawings, but it's not included in the card drawing package. So you may wanna check with them, it may be work they are planning on doing, um, and simply have not gotten around to.
Alright, so we talked about uh, the unmerger of the lots. Um, that you believe they were merged in nineteen eighty-three, but you don't know when the original four lots were platted out. Um, let me ask the solicitor a question that. In the past, we've had cases where we're unmerging lots back to the condition they were when they were originally platted. This is a little bit different because we're not unmerging it to its prior condition, we're unmerging it to a different condition. Uh, are there any criteria or considerations that would be applicable in that case?
I don't think so, I don't, I've delivered the research, just to get that answer to see whether or not the merger provisions in the law. Allows just to peel back once versus all the way back to the original, um, you know, plat. So I will certainly have to deliver the research on this.
They never existed as two lots.
Correct.
Right, they either existed as four lots or one lot.
My reading of the town ordinance and the state law, uh, looks like they can do exactly what they're asking to do. However, just to confirm that, give an opportunity to do a little research, just to make sure that we are applying.
That's fine.
Honors of the law properly.
And so, you just talked about if you do unmerge this one lot and create two lots. Is it your testimony that those two resulting lots will be conforming in all respects? That they'll be of the appropriate size for the zone, you know, they'll meet the frontage requirements that these two lots. Uh, will meet all those requirements?
No, they're gonna be.
They're not. So they're not meeting the requirements? So would they not then need a dimensional variance if the two unmerged lots don't meet the requirements?
He would have to build within what's allowed with the current conditions, it's illegally knock upon the lot. If in fact, the board does um, vote to unmerge.
So I guess that becomes the question, is lacking a variance to the contrary. We are talking about taking a non-conforming large lot and turning it into ver, two smaller, very non-conforming.
That's a whole idea of the unmerging and with special use permit. Uh, so they merge with tax reasons, I mean, other reasons too, plus services, water availability, et cetera. But certainly that's something to consider going backwards.
Yeah, is, is the current one lot conforming or does it have inherent non-conformities in the current one lot?
Size-wise, it should be conforming, I am assuming the structure that's on the lot now is a single-family home.
Is a single-family, it's above requirements.
It is conforming as to size now.
And pro, the front, we can check if it has like the correct frontage, uh.
Plenty of frontage, more than double.
With the one.
Looks like it's built on one of the four lots.
But that lot as a whole. Is conforming to the regulations of the zone in which it currently resides. If we separate that one conforming lot, we've now created two lots that each now have non-conformities to them. So I would say, is that contrary to the intent of zoning? If you have something that is currently conforming. To move it into a condition where it is less conforming for that zone?
Under the new state law that speaks exactly about this subject, um, they do talk to the subject of. That the purpose of this was strictly, I mean, it wasn't strictly, but again, it was financial. Town gain in terms of doing that and then complying to zoning, however, now, um, the legislators come around and. The newest law basically by right almost, um, where if you, if you fulfill certain criteria, then you can go by right. However, he, um, there's property around there that the lots are a little bit bigger, therefore it requires him to come here and get a special use permit. That's the mechanism for undoing it.
I think we may also uh, want to see some kind of documentation. So when you unmerge these into two lots, these lots are gonna have a certain square footage, you said it was eighty by eighty, right?
Correct.
So that's a certain size lot. If you want to demonstrate that that's compatible with the neighboring land uses. Perhaps it might be a good idea to show what are the typical square footages of other lots in that area. Are there other lots? Of this size or possibly smaller, um, but we'd like to probably see on a plan a distribution of what that looks like. So we can judge are there one or two smaller lots, or there is twenty smaller lots. See what is the overall balance of the size you're proposing. Versus the size that's actually conforming to uh, the requirements for that zone. I was right now. It's hard to judge, uh, you know, how this fits in with the overall fabric of the neighborhood.
He's got a copy of that, so, I mean, I, whatever you need, Chair, sure.
Okay, um.
Didn't you have a copy of the plot plan?
Well, the, that's not, that's not what we're asking for. So the stuff that was included in the packet here, there. There's this thing, right, that's just the town's, um. Rate, the radius map showing where, that's not a surveyed.
Okay.
Uh, by a licensed land surveyor, because, right, you say the lot is going to be eighty by eighty when it's unmerged. The dimensions that are given on this sort of generic town plan. Uh, are not actually surveyed to be confirmed dimensions.
Wasn't there another portion, a sheet shown before?
There, there's this piece, but again, that's. We got that. We've got two pages with some text on it here, so we've got another two pages. And that.
Listen, I get it.
Yeah, so I think, again, when we're talking about a land development.
To get to this meeting, so I get what you guys are saying, you get what. To get to this meeting, so I get what you guys are saying, get what you need. Just let me know what you need and what we can move forward.
We can make a list of what things are needed. To clarify.
Very good.
I mean, this looks great if we were with the building commissioner. And, you know, so if you could get this level of detail translated into the actual land and how it relates to the other properties.
No problem, sure.
Makes sense.
I got you.
Before we see what other issues might be raised by the public that might impact what requests we have, are there any questions at this moment for the applicant?
So just to make it clear, the house that's on there now is going to be demoed.
Yeah, it, it has to be. I mean, it's just totally unsafe and dilapidated and it's an overgrown lot, you know? It's pretty much a waste of what it is right now, you know? Help with the housing and it will help the town with tax control. So, I mean, it's kind of a win for the town either way.
Is the current expectation that all of the vegetation on that lot would be removed?
More or less, or at least landscape to be more presentable. Because, I mean, it's basically like a barren wasteland at this point.
So what, what is it doing there now, like?
Sitting there being just land, I don't know.
What was it before?
Nothing, vacant land.
No, it's a house.
No, there's a house on the.
Oh, there's a hot, there's a loud, there's a house, sorry, there's a house on the corner of Third and Homestead.
And then somebody merged everything together and lived in that house.
Correct. The Francis property, who happens to be my cousin.
Okay.
Which sold me the house due to whatever it is that I need to get into. It goes up to a budding second street, which is a paper road. Of which right across from Second Street is the Ford family. I was speaking of that my father owns. Behind that, down Second Street, that paper road are eight additional lots where at some point, you know, we'll be coming to see you guys to build there. As myself, I'd like to build behind there to move back to my hometown. But all that being said, it's in the future. Right now, we have this wide open space of lots and the dilapidated house on the corner of Third and Homestead. Then my brother was right behind that house. So it's like a whole family kind of compound there.
And so the reason why it's not, it's overgrown is that you folks don't live there any longer and you've let it?
So my cousin Tommy Francis has major health issues, couldn't upkeep the property, and that's what happened. And we can never maintain throughout the years.
And since you bought it, it stayed in the same state.
I just acquired it in December, which is why I rushed and you have some lackluster information in front of you and those are my apologies on that. To make this meeting because, you know.
It's helpful to understand the context.
And thank you, thank you for the opportunity of explaining, I appreciate that.
Okay, was there anything else before we invite members of the public to give us their further input? All right, if you want to have a seat for a moment, we'll open the public portion of the hearing. Is there anyone present that would like to offer input on this matter? Yes, sir, if you'd like to come up, so please identify your name and address for this to not.
Okay, my name's Matthew Masso, Seven Homestead Avenue. I'm actually two properties away from the location they want to do this.
So you're on Homestead Avenue and you're two properties away from this.
Yes, sir. My, I, it's, I'm nervous, I don't like public speaking.
We're all a friendly group, sure.
I, like, I grew up in these provinces, I was raised in these provinces. I lived in a neighborhood where there was multifamilies. It, in my opinion, there's a lot of issues, there's a lot of problems that arise from it. I understand there is a multifamily right across on the corner. That's fine. We already have a lot of traffic and speeding cars from the apartment buildings that are already there. In my opinion, people who rent really don't care about the area and not to mention Laurel Lane.
Hold on, we're gonna, we're gonna let the public. We're gonna let the public make their comments and then we can.
Laurel Lane as a community, if Mr. Ferraro was actually was willing to move back to his hometown and upkeep the property and everything like that, he wouldn't try to split a lot and build two two-family homes. He would tear down the house that's dilapidated as he puts it and build a current home there. The neighborhood is a nice neighborhood. I moved to the suburbs for a nice area. It's a sought after neighborhood. I understand why people want to build, want to build and live there. But I just don't feel that this should be allowed. And I, I am objecting to this. It's just, in my opinion, it's, it doesn't work for the neighborhood.
Nice, your concerns are you feel there's a density of traffic already in the neighborhood and you think this could potentially make that worse? And you don't feel that two, two-family homes on this lot is appropriate and you're suggesting that you think one single family home on the large lot as it exists now?
Or at least one structure.
One structure.
Yeah, but, but the, the demographic of the neighborhood, I would say, a one-family home. And that, that's pretty much it. That's what drew, drew me and my fiancee to the town. She's lived in the rest of her whole life. I was from these provinces, like, we moved to the neighborhood because it is a neighborhood, it is a suburb. It's quiet, it's nice, you know? People have a sense of community. You know your neighbor. And with people renting, you don't know who, who's coming in, who's going out, who lives there, who does not. You know, is there going to be police problems? Is there going to be, someone gets hit by a car because someone's speeding down the road to get to that house? You're talking about one parking space per dwelling? Okay, you put one parking space, most people have two cars. Where else are you going to park that car?
Yeah, and I think since we don't have a complete site plan showing.
No, 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 I'm just, overall rule of the, of the state, one, one parking spot for one dwell. Well?
Okay.
Out of curiosity, you said you live at Seven Homestead?
Yes, sir.
Are you related to Erica Guncalves?
That's my fiancee.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
So yes, we should acknowledge that for the record, a letter was received. Has the, did the applicant receive a copy of this letter?
I did.
You did, okay, so that's a letter. You know, we'll put that in evidence that this is a letter from Seven Homestead Avenue objecting to the construction of the two, two-family dwellings on an unmerged lot. So that, we have that entered into evidence. We can call Exhibit A. Maya, you have a copy, I would imagine. Are there any other concerns you have about this application?
Just everything that comes along with construction.
Okay.
And honestly, my biggest thing too is my car's expensive that I drive and the tires are expensive and what, what kind of hip hop tires? I need to get all four, not one.
Okay.
It's, it's just a lot of things, but that's, that's my, that's my thing.
You've expressed the primary points.
Yeah, that's all, that's.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to offer input on this application? Sir, yes, please come up, identify yourself.
Good evening, Greg Parisi, Sixteen Homestead.
All right.
Just basically mirroring what he was saying, live across the street.
So you're on the opposite side of the street?
Uh, yeah. Just not sure, you know, you talked about curb cuts, my, my mailboxes across the street there, I don't know how that would be affected. Homestead is the entrance to Laurel Lane, there's already a lot of cars that go down there, they go quickly. Adding four more units just does not seem like the best use of that land. Like previous speaker said, want to fix the house, make a nice new one, fine with that, but four new properties seems a lot.
So your concerns mirror the previous speaker emphasizing the concerns about traffic and the density of four units.
Yeah, like I said, you know, everyone goes down Homestead to get to the rest of the neighborhood and they go fast already. So adding more volume and density is just not really my great idea, but that's all I have right now.
Thank you for your concerns. Is there anyone else present who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Yes, sir, if you'd love to come up, please.
My name's Todd Hebert.
Yeah.
Eight Homestead Ave.
Eight Homestead Ave.
I own my grandparents' house.
Okay.
My family had owned from Medicum to Third Street. As they started to get older, they moved on, sold the properties.
Eight is on.
Eight is on the opposite side of the road.
Yeah.
And maybe a house away from the Ford family apartment that is already there.
Yeah.
The one house on the corner that they're talking about tearing down, what was my understanding that what they wanted to do was take one down and put one up? And then when I got that thing in the paper, it said that they were going to put, split the lot and put two double-family houses. I think that's going to overpopulate the neighborhood, just same thing as everybody else is concerned about. I mean, the, the traffic's bad there. I mean, it's, it's a family neighborhood, there's young kids there. I mean, you put too many people in a spot like that, and I mean, you're going to have a problem.
Okay, so your concerns reflect what we've heard previously about the density of the units proposed and traffic. Okay, any other specific concerns?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else present in the audience who wants to speak regarding this? All right, not seeing anyone else that wants to speak regarding this. The applicant can come back up again to the podium, please. So the primary concerns we've heard from those who've spoken are a concern about the increased density that this proposal would bring to the neighborhood and potential hazards due to increased traffic in the neighborhood. Do you want to speak regarding those two specific concerns?
And, you know, with respect, I, I do understand the concerns and I definitely by no means want to do anything to deteriorate that neighborhood. As I said, I grew up there myself. So those are valid concerns. That being said, if traffic is an issue, I think you should be bringing that before the police station and not the zoning board. As a property owner there, I would gladly sign any petition to put a four-way stop sign on Homestead and Third Street, which I feel should have been there a long time because to all your points, there is a lot of speeding traffic there. So I think that should have been done a while back. That being said, I want to revisit the fact that there will be ample off-street parking. I'm sure you'll say you don't have that in front of you right now, but with the new submitted prints that you're requesting, you will see that pretty visibly on, on the new plan. So we're not going to add any congestion. It will be more than one car per unit, you'll be looking at at least two per unit. This is going to allow families to come in in a housing crisis and root themselves in a great neighborhood and not be in an apartment complex on Medicum Avenue because there's nothing available. So we're actually helping the demographic in a big way. Being a real estate broker myself, I see the challenges every day as I'm getting calls every day trying to help people. So that's what I'm trying to do at the end of the day, is trying to help people. I'm not an out-of-towner coming here to poach the land to turn a buck. I actually care very deeply for this community, it's near and dear to my heart. And like I said, it will always be home, so I'm not trying to do anything to the negative here.
Since, since we've heard comments about the impacts of traffic in this neighborhood, would it be possible to have a traffic consultant provide data on what in, impact, if any, this development would have on the existing traffic patterns of this neighborhood? Is that something you'd be able to?
Sir, I mean, if that's what you're requesting, I mean, this, what I got to do, you know, I mean.
Let me put it this way. Clearly, there is additional information that I think members of this board are going to ultimately want to see on this project. And I think a lot of that documentation will need to go towards alleviating some of the obvious optics problems that this project has. We're talking about taking what is currently a single-family conforming lot of land in a residential neighborhood, give or take twelve and a half, thirteen thousand square feet, cutting that into two lots at sixty-four hundred square feet each and putting up two dual four-bedroom apartment residential, uh, four-bedroom dual-unit residential buildings that will each require no less than five building variances to move forward. If I'm understanding the math based on the floor or the, the gridded ground plan that you provided, you would need the initial variance to make the lot only sixty-four hundred square feet. You would need a variance for the eighty-foot frontage where you need a hundred and ten. You would need a variance for the eleven-foot front yard setback where you need twenty-five. You would need a variance for the give or take nine-foot setback in the rear where you need thirty-five. The deck isn't really measured, so it's a little tough to say for sure. And you are already at maximum lot coverage. This is the reason why we need a site plan, is to be able to see what the physical mass of these buildings looks like relative to the lot lines, relative to the neighboring buildings. The plans that you have provided indicate that these buildings are forty feet tall, you're only allowed thirty-five. So there are a lot of inconsistencies and optics issues with what has been presented before us today. So you need to be able to provide enough information and to the chairman's point, enough backup information that shows us this is not uncommon in the neighborhood before we can look at this as anything other than taking a perfectly fine lot, turning it into two very small, not perfectly fine lots and filling them with bedrooms.
And I think you should come prepared, yes, if you want to.
Mr. Chair, just in the clarity that, going back to the merger question earlier, legally, yes, he can, he is allowed to apply to have the lots unmerged back to the dual lot.
Even though that was never a prior condition, but those lots were.
Correct, he can do that, so that's a proper application for this board. Second of all, if he is proposing what is allowed, he would not need any variances. He has to show what is allowed if those two lots are subdivided and whether or not he's within what's by right, in other words, dimensions by right. If he, as, as the height, as the clear area where he would need a variance, if he sticks to the forty feet, then he would have to apply not only the special use permits, but also for variance. Unless he can come up with a plan that shows the structures that fit all the dimensions of that not completely non-conforming lot.
Yeah, so if the lot is non-conforming, if it's eighty by eighty, non-conforming, and you want to put a building on it, then you have to demonstrate that the setbacks on that non-conforming lot would meet, is he subject to the fifteen percent? So that whole calculation thing, right? You have to do this calculation.
Yeah, so under the new housing law that went into effect in twenty twenty-three, on a non-conforming property, it's the percentage of the zone it's in. So with, it would be the, this is an R ten and you're creating a sixty-four hundred square foot lot. So it's the percent difference, difference of the ten thousand square foot lot to the sixty-four hundred square foot lot. So the dimensional requirements will actually lessen.
Change. But we need to see that illustrated on a site plan saying, okay, the ordinance says you need a twenty-foot side setback or whatever it happens to be here. However, because this proposed lot is only sixty-four hundred square feet and not ten thousand, that twenty feet is going to be reduced to a lesser number. Do you have that number? Maybe you don't. That's okay. You could, if you have less than that calculation, then you need to ask for a variance for that. And the same thing goes for the rear or the front, you know.
So when we were drawing that, I understand lackluster, I'll use my term again, diagram you have, we did have those calculations, which I don't have on the top of my head, but we well fit within those parameters.
So we need to see that.
I understand you need to see them, but we, yes, we do fit the footprint, yes, I get it.
However, one of the members indicated that you're showing forty feet. So just make sure if you come back, that any area.
Right, it'll be slab on grade rather than having a basement.
You would need a variance for that.
Right, sir, I can eliminate the basement, it'll take care of that, board.
Oh, two things, it's not forty feet, huh?
That's all right, because the plans that were submitted say forty.
But it won't be forty feet high, it's two story, ninety-nine is eighteen feet, two feet of foundation is twenty, and twelve pitch times five weeks up to twenty-three, twenty-four feet, I know thirty-five feet is still.
That's fine, then you just need to submit a different drawing.
If he can get the lots split, mer- unmerged.
We're not there yet.
Then you get a house, then the house is brought to Matthew, then you're going to approve a zoning variance, it's going to come to you. If the houses don't meet the criteria, I pull the plan, a building permit with Matthew in the building department.
Yes, part of the special use is to determine what is going to be done with the lots when they are unmerged because there's no reason to unmerge them if there's no plan to do anything with them. So we need to know, what are you planning to do with the lots when they're unmerged? And these are the drawings you've submitted to show what you're planning to do when they're unmerged.
That could change, who knows?
Well, no, it can, because this is what you've submitted and we're basing our decision.
That could change to a different house on the unmerge, if that doesn't work. We're going to build on these, he's got, not me, I'm not over his, he's going to build on the lots eventually.
Right, whatever you submit here is what we're going to condition the approval on. So if you want to do something different, like if this says forty feet and you don't want to build forty feet, you need to submit a different drawing to show something that's not.
Understood, Chair.
I understand.
We can't just give a blanket approval to just. We can't just give a blanket approval to just unmerge these lots and then you do whatever you want on them.
Knowing what's going there, I get that.
We have to know what you're gonna do with them, sure.
So in terms of what you need to move forward and proceed here.
We need a, we need a surveyed site plan. Right, showing the survey boundaries of these two lots you're going to create. We need to see the footprint of the buildings, both of them, on their two respective lots. We need to see um. In that two-hundred-foot circle of butters, like we'd like to see that shown on the same plan, the lots that are adjacent. Just two streets, where the curb cuts are going to be, where the driveways are going to be. Any decks, porches, patios, sheds, anything else you're planning on putting on the lot. We need to see the dimensional setbacks to each of those pieces, so that is to the furthest extent of any steps. Port, deck, whatever you're putting here, all those dimensions. We would need to see the calculations for the square footage of lot coverage, including. The decks, the porches, sheds, any accessory bits and pieces you wanna add on there. All gotta be delineated, you gotta have the mathematics there to show how you arrived at that. Uh, we're suggesting it would be helpful. To see a map of the general neighborhood, uh, if you're contending that this is compatible with the similar types of houses. Maybe mark on a plan, this is a two-family, this is a four-family, this is a six-family, this is a one-family. Show how that distribution looks uh, with regard to uh, the area. You wanna suggest that these are appropriately sized lots, maybe there's a plan that shows. I've got two sixty-four hundred square foot lots, you know, the lot next door is nine thousand square feet, and one over here is only five thousand. Show what that distribution looks like uh, in the neighborhood. Uh, it wouldn't hurt your case if you had some kind of traffic data. To indicate what would be the impact if you're having a four, you know, two duplex four-bedroom. Units uh, on this street. Is it gonna have an impact on traffic, or is there data to support that, uh, you know, it would not, because right now we just have. You say.
My word there.
Yeah, right, you say, yeah, minimal if any impact, they say, oh, it's gonna be a terrible impact.
Sure.
Well, we don't have any data in front of us by anyone who's a recognized expert or authority in that matter. Uh, to base that on, and so that could potentially, right, this is all your option, I'm not telling you, you must submit these things.
No, I get what you're saying.
We're telling you, these are the pieces that may help us arrive at a decision.
Sure.
So, the more information in terms of paper-backed data. That you can supply, uh, that support the standards for the special use that you have to meet. The more evidence we have on which to make a decision. Versus just you say it's gonna be this way and your neighbors say it's not gonna be this way.
Sure. So I guess, uh.
Can I make a?
Onto February?
Yeah, so make a motion to, to table this and move it to the next meeting to give them time to get that.
We can, unless anyone has any other comments at this time uh, for the applicant that might direct.
What is your demographic, your aim demographic for these two residential apartments? I'm looking at your website, it says you have student housing, specializing in student housing investments, so I was just wondering the nature of. Advertised.
Um. I don't really advertise rentals like that, I, I don't know, um. I, I just wanna, to help the community, so what, okay, one, one of my. Clients who actually happens to be a family member reached out to me who's been a lifelong Warren resident as well, single mother of two. Can't find any housing, tried going such and a, and I know such and a has a stigma of being bad, but we have a lot of good people that just need housing. That are short on their fun getting that voucher. There's over a hundred people on the waiting list for that, now I'm not saying this is such and a, or I'm talking in that demographic. I'm trying to illustrate the true dire need for housing in the community.
We understand that, whether.
Of the state, no, I get you understand, I, I mean, you asked me, that's what I'm saying, that the demographic is to help shrink in that number and get people into suitable housing. So, will people be vetted properly? Of course, will there be background checks for rentals? Of course, like there should be always, when not.
I just happen to.
Storm lawyers, when not, I mean, my father has never been an issue with criminalities over there, people slashing buyers.
We're suggesting.
We're not suggesting any of that, I just happen to punch your name in here for the, you know, if you see your website, and it says, first thing it says is specializing in student housing.
That's odd, I, I don't even recall doing that, because I specialize in seller buyers, investors at most, I mean, rentals are so far.
I'm just wondering what your demographic is, and if you have some sort of platform, and, and that's it, so.
My platform in real estate, sir, I'm trying to just again, create the housing for the community and. Really, really help, in, in the end, again, I'm not a poacher, just trying to turn a profit.
And it's fine if you don't have a target demographic, some developers coming and say.
That was like, well, question, I, with respect, I didn't really not answer that question.
That's fine, that's fine, some developers might come in and say, yes, I'm planning to develop this for a fifty-five-plus senior.
Yeah, it's not that.
That's fine, if you don't have a target demographic, that's fine, we understand that, we just wanna know if there was some concept of what this was.
It, it wasn't like a secluded community I'm going after, it's, you know, who seems that that would be suitable for them. Plant their roots there, I think that's kind of um, a benefit of having these larger units is. They'll almost take the place of having to have the affordability of a single-family house, which in Warren, I, I think the median price. Is around five hundred thousand now, families can't really afford that, you know, they're much better having a unit like this in a neighborhood to get rooted in. Start their family, maybe in time, if the market ever does come down, they'll have the opportunity, but at least they're rooted with our schools, with our neighborhood. Homestead Park, which I grew up in, is a great place to play, Laurel Park, call hogging in the summer, like, there's a lot of. Benefits to living in that neighborhood, as I'm sure all the neighbors will tell you. I'm not trying to destroy that by any means, I wanna be very clear on that.
Um, I think that's fine, I think also, as we're talking about the site plan. Another thing that, I mean, your engineers or whoever's designing this probably already have this in the works, but it would likely be beneficial. Uh, show how you're handling a stormwater management, because again, not to create a nuisance or hazard is one of the standards. And you're now going to be covering more of the surface with built structure than currently exists today. So it would be good to show on that plan how you're planning to deal with preventing runoff onto other properties. Or how you're going to handle that being contained on the property. And the other thing, if you're planning on putting any sort of uh, fencing or plantings that are screening the property from adjacent. Lots, I'm not saying you have to do that, I think if there's anything you're proposing, your designers would like to show us. In terms of what the character of the property is going to be like, um, that might be something useful to demonstrate.
So, Chair, thank you.
I guess, so the question then becomes. From a timeframe standpoint, I'm not familiar with your designers. I think the situation would be, we would typically, you would have to request a continuance. So that we would not necessarily come to a decision now, we would allow you to come back at a, at a future meeting date when you feel that you've adequately put together. The rest of the material that you wanna present, I guess the question is, do you think that you would be ready to do that in February? Do you think your designers may be even fun than that?
What, is it mid-February in the meeting?
It's the third Wednesday of the month.
The third Wednesday of the month.
And I would say, um, it's not necessarily a bad idea if you can have some of your design representatives here, if you have. The person who's designed the plan, or more importantly, the person who's laying out the site plan, so they can speak to it, uh, you know, if they're a licensed engineer. And have technical knowledge of why things are being laid out, you know, why is the driveway in this position? Why is this in this relationship to the street, because we may have questions regarding that. I mean, if you feel you're, you have the technical expertise to answer those kind of questions, that's fine, but you may wanna have some design staff on hand. To explain, just, we have a piece of paper in front of us, we might wanna know the reasoning behind certain decisions that were made for the site plan.
I would say let's push out to March, give me some time, please.
I think that seems like a reasonable ask, so the request from the applicant is to continue this matter um, to the March meeting. Which uh, we're going to discuss under administrative matters, this is a conflict withholding the meeting and its regularly. Scheduled time in this room is apparently there's some other activity happening in this room at that time. Uh, so we, we don't know just yet what the date for the March meeting, correct? Correct, so this room is not available. Before you leave, yes, it's.
This is Chair, and I recommend just continuing the matter to next month with the understanding that we're gonna be gonna have some continuance. And the only reason I'm bringing that up is because of public notice, in terms of a public hearing, I think that would be beneficial. Continue this to next month.
And then continue it again.
Again, in February, I'm gonna continue to a definite uh, date, not March.
Alright, unless, I mean, we, we're gonna decide the date in March now, it's on the agenda. I mean, can we just decide the date now and?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Alright, so. Can we, can we just recess your application for a moment, while we decide what day we're having the meeting in March, so then we can give you a certain date? No problem, alright, so we're gonna recess this application, and we're going to move to the administrative portion just to decide. The date of the March meeting. So, when is this room uh, available?
Thursday, there, it's always available, the Wednesday before, it's available.
So potentially, it could be either Wednesday the twelfth or Thursday the twentieth?
Or any Thursday.
So if you wanna keep it as close to the normal date as possible, it is open on Thursday, the normal date would have been the nineteenth?
Yes, correct.
Alright, so what are people's feelings on Thursday the twentieth?
It works for me.
As long as, right, so long as we have the same five people present. Are we in agreement?
Sure.
I assume someone wanna make a motion to uh, re-uh, allocate the schedule for March, this meeting will be held on the twentieth?
I can make that motion.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so the date and time for the March meeting will be March twentieth at seven PM in this location. Alright, so now we will uh, return to uh, applications twenty-five oh-two, three, four, that are before us, you wanna come back now? We're gonna resume uh, the motion, so you've made a request. That we continue it to the March meeting, which is determined to be March twentieth, is that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Okay, should the date of that meeting approach and you find that you require additional time? You can notify of the town offices that you'd like uh, an additional continuance, you don't have to appear here in person. On March twentieth to ask for that, so, you know, if we're getting to that week, you don't have all the data, let them know. And we can uh, put that on the agenda that you'd like to approach.
Sure.
That's all clear?
All clear.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to continue this matter?
I will make a motion to continue applications twenty-five oh-two, twenty-five oh-three, and twenty-five oh-four to the March meeting. Now scheduled for March twentieth.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed? If your uh, applications are now continued to March twentieth. Thank you. With that, we have one more uh, item under administrative matters, uh, we have the nomination and voting for officers of the board. For the current uh, year. Uh, generally, we start with the position of vice chair, if there are any nominations uh, for that position. I'll nominate, I would generally nominate the current vice chair.
I second that.
Jason Raynone.
Sure.
If there was a second to that nomination, are there any other nominations for the position of vice chair? I'm not hearing any other nominations, so we consider the nominations for the position of vice chair closed. Uh, so we'll bring it to a vote, uh, the candidate nominated is the current vice chair, uh, all in favor?
Bye.
Uh, any opposed? So there'd be five uh, votes yes, zero votes no, uh, Jason Raynone would be re-uh, selected as the vice chair.
Thank you, everybody. Congratulations.
Are there any nominations for the position of chair of the board?
Should we nominate Chuck in absence?
You can do whatever.
I will nominate Andrew.
Alright, um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I accept that, uh, are there any further nominations for the position of chair? Uh, not hearing any, uh.
Oh, I guess I should call that vote all in favor. Any opposed?
Alright, very good, so that nomination, uh, the current chair, being myself, will continue in the position for the next year. Uh, does anyone have any other notes, upcoming absences for administrative uh, items?
Just to remind everybody, I'm not here February or April.
February, but you'll be here in March?
I will.
So February and April, uh, you will not be able to join us.
Yep, and I believe my schedule is not settled yet, but April and June are looking like months.
April and June, okay. So to make sure we have a forum. As the dates approach, it's always helpful if you just email Maya, you know, a week or two before, just to confirm if you are or not. Uh, hopefully we should be fine. Alright, uh, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Goes to adjourn?
All in.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Right, so we are adjourned, right?